Ah, the SK Council headed by the Honorable Sanya Sumiggin. Good morning everyone, good morning constituents of this barangay. May I request everyone to please rise for the entrance of the official maest of the Sanggunyang Bayan of Ipil, together with our residing officer, the Honorable Ramzes Troy de Olegario, with our acting secretary for now, we have Ms. Jerelyn Cardenya.
Hello, may muntag sa tanan? Okay, the 85th regular session at the same time the mobile session held at the barangay Logan is hereby called order. Start with, may request our IPMR, the Honorable Alapit Mahamad for the invocation and we're in standing for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem.
Amplo pa. Azubillah minas syutan razum, bismu wa rahman wa rahim. Wa qala radhikumudun, estajadlakum, aminirabbal alamin. Allahumma rabbana taqaddhal minna innat antas samiul alun. Wa tukdhalayna innakantat madadur rahim. Maqana'ala ikhlal, allajinasagakunadil iman. Wala'tal kulkuluhu nadullaha, jina'amanirabbana innakarabur rahim. Wasallalahu ala khair, alqisara na muhammadiin. Wa ala'alihu rasahu wasallim. Walhamdulillah, rabbal alamin.
Pangaka babayan ang pambansang awm. Nung das.
Hello, okay, requesting our Madam Secretary for the roll call.
Good morning and welcome to the 85th regular session of Ipil. Present for today's regular session, our chair are the Honorable Ramzes Troy de Olegario, the Honorable Kakal Gino Turalba, the Honorable Glenn Ayang Sabnurin, the Honorable Sarafin Al Ramos, the Honorable Kalan Patalungay, the Honorable Juan Cabo Ni, the Honorable Yedekriad Chongon. Thank you, the Honorable Chair. We are now standing in room, the Honorable Alapit Mahamad.
Um, there are eight members present, the chair would like to declare that there's a corrum. Start with, may request our floor leader for the adoption of the order business.
Mr. Chair, this young chair, may I move for the adoption of the order business for today's regular session?
Any second to motion, duly surrendered by the Honorable Sabian, discussion? Any amendments, objection? Abinant the motion, is he ready?
Mr. Chair, we are now on the visitors' hour, I move for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our visitors. Privilege motion, Mr. Chair, before we will accommodate our visitors, may I move to relinquish the chair to the Honorable Wenifred Chong who is now around, thank you.
Rule suspended, thank you Honorable Turalba at managing our um, regular floor leader, the Honorable Wenifred Chong, sir, good morning. We are now on the visitors' hour, Mr. Floor. I think we'll first accommodate our concerns of the barangay council of this barangay.
I move for the suspension of the rule to accommodate our visitors.
My rule suspended.
Barangay Council.
There.
Concerns of barangay.
Barangay Council of.
Yes.
Logan. This, take the rose room.
Okay, who will speak for and in behalf of the barangay chairperson of this barangay, barangay Logan? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Honorable Kakal Agustin be recognized.
Okay, the Honorable Agustin is.
May muntag sa tanan, may muntag dyan. May muntag, salamat kayo sa presensya. Nakayos, sanggunyang bayan, mobile season. Pagpasalamatan ang gino, sayang pagkamayo, sato matag sa kinabuhay. Okay, na ang mga mga ah, concern, may tumutama road going to upper pangi. No, nasugdanasiya din sa address. Dirisa daw sebakalan, parul sa upper pangi, sila pasimaman. Dayonikado ang mga mga concern is plastic chair. Dika tuloy is computer, desktop and with printer to paper iski. Ikaw pa't nga ah, unipon for barangay officials and tunnels. Ikailima water, water electric connection to daycare center. Ang salamat, may muntag sa tanan.
Okay, I think um, was the pleasure of the body ng tao pagsapagsaan o ah, bag ang ilang mga raised issues and concerns. Okay, first ah, concern was road uh, going to upper pangi. Can say um, makahatag siguro ang pangutan na if sa benisha funded by the congressional office or provincial road?
Paliko na to siya.
Okay, requesting Honorable Agustin nga pwede sa mabalik tri, kainamay mga pangutan na gamay? Kons, ah, namay pangutan na if kaning ongoing project sa upper pangi road? Project, unsan niya siya, kaning provincial road or barangay road?
Barangay road, Mr. Chairman.
Ah, yes, as we have observed, kita man atano ongoing ang construction. Unsa mani, kinsan niya siya, ah, gikan is GPWH, gikan is atong congressional office? Asang funding gikan ano, kaya para makabalotag, asa tamo paluap?
Explain na kayo, first time po kung barangay councilor dayon, mura ko na kumasugdan ang budget ka.
Okay.
Asa nagikan, kaning mga barangay officials, diri nga, nahan nga galinkod.
Lagi, may we know if ah, kaning existing ongoing uh, road concreting diha sa kaning dalan going to upper pangi, if asa, kasi implement ano? Right, did, did it, did it, did it, did it?
Hello, may muntag, ah, gikan na sa, sir, sa Congress map.
Ah, okay, congressional office, okay, so, unsa gusto ninyo nga kwan sir, mapaloap na sa status or?
Paluap na lang siguro siya.
Ah, paluap, okay. Sige, so what's the, any comments coming from the body?
Na, 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 na kuy pangutan. Kining request nyo diri, road going to upper pangi? Ong going na project o wala pa mas, o wala, wala pigod ni request pa? Ah, inyong pangutan na kung ang sta dalan diya sa pangi, mabuti diri sa Logan.
Ah, ah. So what's the pressure of the body?
Um, Honorable Chair, I move, I move that this matter will refer to, in fact, commit on infrastructure.
Okay, before we're going to refer it to the committee on infrastructure? Namay ah, ikasugyo, kons? Or mofalo up kay kong? Okay. Sige, prefer to committee on infrastructure and then siguro ah, ifollow up ni Honorable Turalba ang status to the office of the second district representative, the Honorable Congresswoman Antonietta Yudella. Next concern, plastic chairs. Ah, lagi, kwan lang, ah.
Okay.
Unahon lang san ato ni kwan, unsa pamanin? Kwan mani no, mga satong nasayran, kwan ni siya, mga hangiok ni siya, kung mahimo, mahatag sa Sanggunyang Bayan but um, for the information of this barangay council, um, the Sanggunyang Bayan and myself no, sa office of the vice mayor, um, wala man tay mga funding ni ano eh. Busa siguro among sabut-sabutan, kung namimahatag no? Kaning kamot me nga, namimahatag, aning one of the listed concerns diri no, kaning plastic chairs, computer. Pero amo lang ipasabot nga, ang office of this Sanggunyang Bayan o office of the vice mayor, ah, wala, give me funding for this, ang mahitabuan eh. Personal nga funds nga mahatag, hugtaman sa amo makaya siguro, no, di lang punme mo ingog, asa ano mo mahatag. But after the session, siguro amo sabutan, o kasi amo mahatag ano. So the fifth concern is water and electric connection to daycare center. Unamoy lang ang pangutan ano?
Um, can we ask the the, the, the concern, kung unsa status ano? Kini inyong ginahangyo? Kining water and electric connection to daycare center? Unsa status ano karoon? May existing tubig o wala dyan?
May muntag sa tanan? Kwan lang mo share kay, naami tangki unta. Ang problema namo, bilik man mudagan dito sa heart center ang kwan. Kwan na nga, oh, mangayon ta niyo, solusyon, unsa on ng mudagan dito sa kwan sa heart center, mara may tangki.
In short, mga yamug tubuh.
Pagpadagan? Pagpadagan unta dito. Connection, water connection.
Connection. Oh, quarantine.
Okay. Igi apili siya sa, patka concerns nga angay pagka-gastuan, so siguro no, ato lang pangitag paagi, kung unsa on pagtubag nilang issues and concerns. So first issue was ah, atong dalan and it is, it is being referred to, it was referred to the committee on infrastructure and the four concerns regarding sa ilang mga pinanginulan sa barangay, um, aside set no, ato lang ding sabut-sabutan, o kasi eto matabang, aning ilang mga concern. But rest assured, noted ang inyong mga concerns. So, any comments? Wala na? Before we, yes, the Honorable Sarafin Ramos?
Ah, dunala ko, kumtanan ba kay, kami senior citizens, naghatag si mayor ni Riso ng 50 kabuo.
Bangko?
Silya. Ah, but asan or silya? Kayo mudugan lang siguro na. Kay ka na 50 kabuo, kung napalang 50 kabuo. Mura gamay lang na siguro, puna na, na na.
Okay, um, asan mo i-address ang question, Honorable Agustin?
Oo.
Of course.
Barangay.
Okay, sige na, pakiklaro na sa inyong question, asa'y pangutan na, kons?
Kisa may chairman sa committee on senior citizens diri sa barangay council sa, ang local.
Pangutan na ni, kons Ramos, kons, kung kinsa ang inyong chairperson sa committee on senior citizens? Kinsa nga kagawat?
Parwag yo kabaluhan.
Sa senior, kasi chairman, kasi committee chairman sa senior citizens? Ikaw? Ah, si former kapitan, ang kwan. Naipangutan na si Sir Ramos, sige sir, si Paliog, pangutan na.
Eh, malaw, Paliog, kung, kwan, kaya sa Silya, nagid ulit ni mayor, diri nga 50 kabuo.
Oh, tinood na nga, na'y 50 kabuo.
Kilay, kilay nabiliin karoon?
Mauon naman lang ng nabili no.
Kilay kabuo?
Nang, kilay lang ng kabuo. Sa tinood lang na, pagabot diri, ingon nga, delete daw ipagamit, unta, kwan kay kwan lagi daw kaning arkilahan. Pagabot na sa, kwan, wala na may lain, di, nagamit dyan. Mautong uban oh, uba na. Tumut sa
Kadugayo.
Kadugayo na, preso nga, ang 50, kwan na siguro kabot 50. Namay na lang nabiliin.
Dayon, nagrequest mo mo Silya, pilag yo kabuo Silya nga kinalan, kinalan niyo?
Oh, magiskot me nga, kida kranon, dagran yo dunta, kay ubay-ubay maning member po diri niya, gamay naman lang na amok Silya, mauon naman lang na ang nabiliin. Preso, magiskot ka oh, kada kranon, ay, taganda kadi, pero kamalay mantiban na, pilag yo hatag niyo.
Okay, okay, are you through?
Ay, mayon tag Silya God, gamit ono man Silya, panahon sa general symbol, barangay, di dagan-dagang diw kinalan. Oh, ang senior citizens maka provide ato letong lipan ketupuan na nawala ng mga Silya, dugangan na na toto. Anya ang ader ah, organizations, like for example ang iski. Odi mo mukapurbay, iski pugan ader, chairs, plastic chairs, kayo namasre budget. Agamo bilang meron ba drey? Kuteed barangay, kumbagdun eh, pagtagpuhok kabuo, kuan di diite kabuo, Silya, kadakusyal. Tapi tindeganapun, munanaga, kwan siguro ato lang, pagsuba danyan ya. Mangita tag pagi nga, kwan, maka, maka kuwata ader source. Ah, sige la, kay sa gino ni, ni Vice, amo na pagitag paagi nga maka purbay talilya, kani ng mga pinanginulan nila diri sa Logan, barangay Logan.
Okay, okay, pakita iknout lang, basig mapangitanimo no, being the committee chair on senior citizens, basig makahatag na po rin tuiga kung another round of plastic chairs, na sa tanan ang kabarangayan sa lungsod sa Ipil.
Ako lang palo, si mayor, na na.
Pasalang ka resolution niya?
Mau.
Other matters, requesting the Honorable Mayor to locate funds para sa pagpanghatag ng bangko sa senior citizen, okay? So, okay kons, amo pangitag pa maagi ang inyong mga concerns. So, Mr. Floor, next visitor, I think, do I hear the presence of our two department heads? Our municipal agricultureist and our assistant department head, ato ang MHO, municipal health office? Kasi may ano.
Honorable Chair?
Yes.
I move that municipal health office be recognized.
Okay, ah, Doc. Doc Earl, morning.
So, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Honorable Sanggunyang Ayan. So, I'm here in behalf of our municipal health officer, Dr. Adnil Verzon, in the request of your office regarding the supply of medicines for rabies. So for today, ah, I would like to make a presentation and to give you a copy furnish of our report regarding our rabies program sa municipality of Ipil. See, we would like to provide all the members of the Sanggunyang Bayan at as well as our committee chair for our presentation and later for your inquiries regarding our animal bite treatment status sa ato municipality of Ipil. So there are two copies that we have ah, for you, so the first is, we would like to see ah, the animal bite treatment center for the past um, four years including from 2020 to last year 2023. So there stipulated um, in the document, the number of rabies or animal bite cases that we have, not necessarily rabies um, ah, rabies infection, but animal bite cases we have or animal bite exposure from 2020 to the year 2023. As for now, ah, we would like to, I would like to go on to the second page, which is our rabies control program. For, we have our budget for last year 2023 allotted for medicines for our municipality, which is 1 million pesos. And for anti-rabies vaccine, we don't have any allocation for the year 2023. However, for 2024, we have a total of 2 million pesos budget for medicines and drugs and medicines for our office, and we allotted about 200,000 for that, for the procurement of anti-rabies vaccine. So, as you can see, in the year and quarter 2023, at I break down diha from first quarter to fourth quarter, no? And then we have the number of supplies we have received, so these supplies are coming from the Department of Health, which is downloaded to our provincial health office and allocated per municipality. So for 2023 first quarter, we have received around 500 vials ah, Spida ang brand and ang anti-rabies vaccine, and the target for that vials is around 333 patients. So for the first quarter, we have catered about 153 patients. For the second quarter, we have 331 allocated vaccines and the target for that is 220. However, we have catered around 274 clients for the second quarter. For the third quarter, we have ah, two kinds of vaccine available and allotted to us, we have 80 vials of Spida. We have 140 vials of Vaxirab. And we have the succeeding target of 53 patients and 175 respectively. However, for that third quarter, we have catered around 530 patients. So we have a difference of 302 ah, patients who are unable to avail ah, the vaccines. And for the fourth quarter of that year, we have 44 vials that will cater around 44 patients, however, we have a rise of 422 clients. So we have again a difference of 378 clients um, who are not able to, to receive ah, who are able to receive the vaccine but unable to, to supply it for them for the, for the course of treatment. So, in 2023, we have a total of 595 vials allotted to us. Um, the target for that is 825 in total. However, the actual patients we serve for that year is around 1,379. Now for this year, for the first month, January, we have an allocation of 177 vials um, to cater around 88 patients, but we have catered as much as 218 for the month of January. And for February, we have 70 vials to cater around 35 clients, however, we have an actual clients of 154. So as you can see, the total vials that we received since last year up to present is around 247 vials. After this year, I mean, however, um, to cater around 123, but we catered around 372 um, clients, so we still have a difference of 249. So, these clients that we have since ah, lack ang atong supply, so they sorted to ask for medical assistance sa ato mga government agencies, but I don't know if napuinaabot sa inyo with regards to the assistance of buying the set vaccine. Okay, given the statistics that we have, um, kulang dyan ang atong supply for animal bite um, treatment exposure.
Honorable Chair, that's why we we want to ask you about the, the status of the rabies case in our municipality of Ipil. Since, di langan sila sa center mudagan na po emergency, can you, as the ah, the, the total cases sa, diri sa Ipil, so that we can use it as an aid to our legislation? Para magamit na mo, ang, ang tamdud, data dud, akumpilagod kabukmapakan ka na tuwig?
Yes, sir, we have provided a copy of the breakdown of the number of cases
Yes.
that we catered from 2020 to 2023 po, as.
Annual, annual, annual data?
Yes, 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 sir, we have.
Okay, na may dagangod, madagana nila sa health center, emergency.
To include sa provincial hospital.
To include provincial hospital, kumpilagoy aktwal na, kwan, cases rabies diri sa municipality of Ipil.
So far, ah, for the last year po, we have to disaggregate datas because there was also reporting of, double reporting of cases. Ah, because, dili lang man, ang atong mga patients for anti-rabies would not go to us once. So they would come back multiple times. So, depending on the supplies, so some would sort to going to the provincial health office, at to the provincial hospital to avail for the vaccine, because um, sa to as health center, um, sir, we we give the vaccine as la, as long as it is available and it is free to everybody. But because of the lack of, shortage of supply, so our patients sorted to ask for well, to buy for their own as well as to ask for financial assistance, just to complete the number the required number of those of the anti-rabies vaccine, okay?
Thank you, Doc, Doc Earl. Ah, that's why we invited the persons of the municipal health ah, office to shed light on this matter, kay, handas mangodok, kadalans day ah, dito sa Sanggunyang Bayan, handas nagabitbit ugreseta, no? Kining, nagabitbit ugreseta, may hinapang Sanggunyang Bayan, tunggol kay kalya available, isklayang satu, ang, ang unit. So, may giratin ang matter ka, Doctor Layan, Kalanu, ah, program, ah kay, dito sa office, nagabisita, kama't kini, pinagtobod dyan sa Sanggunyang Bayan. Magmayang dyan, matagalan niya siya o kapinawan, it's because ah, may mag ang ato, akapung, ganitong, ah, may, ibang ibang sa Sanggunyang Bayan. Kaysa ang mga giratay dito sa provincial hospital, dito dito sila, ato na dito, dito dito ugbatan ang provincial, provincial hospital, kaysa dito sa Bayan kagad. Ah, last, ah, ah, regular, second, ito is, na pumisya kama, na, na, pag-aral ng Sanggunyang Bayan, kay, flukon na no, sa barangay, ah, mag, sa, 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 ngayon, matong, malasugod na, na, na na, na, sa, sa, na, na reported sa, 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 ngayon, ngayon, community. Pero, ang handa ka na, ang, ang, personal, at least, maka, maka exchange ng ideas.
However, I would say, I will say that we are kita mo'y pinakadakong allocations for the province, no?
Yes, because maybe if we can present also to them the census na taas, maybe they can give us more resistance in terms of rabies vaccine while dili pa maka-procure ang ato ang R H U or ang ato ang M H O. Now, kanin siyang anti-rabies vaccine, anti-reported cases, no? We have about 42, singa ka total or kilan nisin, uh, 123. So, 23, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100.
Dear Mr. Rafin Ramos.
Uh, Mr. Rafin Ramos. Siguro nung nungat para magagawa diyan tong gasto, uh, budget, about mga cases, uh, rights. Hindi ko rin ang atreto tong taga consideration, sir. Talan mga layaw ng ito, astranimas, ato ganun, pamatlo na, guys. Tama 'yan, naman, naman, nung, sagaya. Kaya problema magagana na, ang problema maginaga, oh, makapakinga ng ero, di sila maongko na ilang ero na? Oh. Kung ano 'yung ato, 'yung mga blangro na? Kaya kana, walay ero, no? Walay ilang layaw ero.
Naman, naman ato ang municipal agriculture risk, but siguro, no? More on ang concern issue ni ni Rais, ni Honorable Rafin Ramos is more on preventive measures.
Oh, preventive?
Yes, so naman ato ang municipal agriculture, no? Si Mr. Appow, siguro, guma na ang concerns kang doctor. Ato na po i-acknowledge si Mr. Appow for the, kuwan, uh, suggestion of the Honorable Ramos for the preventive measure, siguro, aning, uh, rabies. Good morning, sir. Matanan lang putas sa status, sir, sa ato ang pagpanatup, o sa ato ang dog pound?
Okay. Uh, good morning, sa ato ang Vice Mayor, maapatan din, maapatan. Mayor of Future Million, of it is, Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, Rambo, oligary, of course, no? Ang minus sa ato ang sangguriang bayan, mga visitors, o taga Logan, mayong butag na tong tanan. At this appeal, duna tayong mga, more than 20 household, 20 families, kasi geraan ani, nagyero, gawa sa mga stray, or kaming, mga bisaya, or kaming mga askal, mga asus kalye, awain mga breed, mga, mga bago. Uh, naapod sila mga, dunap sila mga, no? Mga naasubalagranasanya, diha kesegraan hanggang hanggang rebustah tabo, ng infection. Ogsori to inform you, nagsalin bragunta, pasupply sa ato ang anti-rabies vaccine for dogs. Sa Department of Agriculture, sa National, o, another sore bragun kay effective last year, 2022, dikat na ang budget from the national government for anti-rabies vaccine sa dogs. Oriso, last year, wala na ibigwe tanag procure o anti-rabies vaccine kanagrabising. Uh, atong 2023, uh, bukan atong, mga, 3 years ago, 300,000 ang ato ang budget for, uh, to procure anti-rabies vaccine, uh, aside from the, the, most one from the national governments, which issue fully 100, 150 vials na, yata sa ato ang. Ngatap manasay, if it up pa atong last year, antong karoon. Onya, tungkol kinagrebusman ang ato ang budget sa municipyo, o sa tanan mong ang L Z O, naapit nahan sa, the budget for procure anti-rabies vaccine for dogs is of course affected. O 100,000 na lang atong budget for this year. 100,000. Pagka, ang may rounds, na with this month, yun na tayo, uh, sir, is a barangay for anti-rabies vaccine issue. Pero unsero na 100,000. Sa mga ero, duna tay, bakin nita almost, ama't pumason kapin ng dogs. Kasi tutang sa batol na, yun, the vaccine, oh. Kasi, for this year, musikun talang siguro, kewat atang barangay, duna tay open, uh, free, dito sa ato ang office, ito is thing, mga two dogs. Kung talan, si Dino, maya babos, open na tay ang the vaccine, kapin ng, talaga, kapin ng ten ero. Yung isa may tato barangay, kagamay lang, kaya namang nabili ng supply. Pagka, uh, uh, kung talba dito, kato, magkadugan ka para sa anti-rabies vaccine. Although, and, uh, anti-rabies program is an auxiliary, uh, diligent na may, uh, mandate, because, uh, our mandate is to produce animals for food, like, uh, cattle, wine, and, uh, cat, uh, chicken, poultry. Pero, napasaan mga inamonin anti-rabies vaccine for, uh, dogs kay wala naging lahan departmento, kay wala pa nang tay, the Rarian office, uh, sa magtay City of Rarian, kay mapantang city, no? Yung ka-city, siguro to, natay, City of Rarian service, kay mitugas kita, budget, budget, sarong dako-dako, ano? Pagka, tinawa ng status, kato, wala kahit pa kaling hope because of the lack of funds purchase, uh, anti-rabies vaccine. Onya, wala po'y budget gikan sa national. Ang province po, nafiun po ng ilahan purchase of anti-rabies. Kay wala mamawang concern nila sa price. Hindi kayo lang taruk na dihatag sa ilan, PR, mayroon kayo, um, mayroon kayo, kayo, sir, yun kayo. Ah, si Rabies. Kayo lang, kaluken ng rabies, talaga, ayaw manghatag sa, la, okay. Apres, normal po nila sa price. May naman po duna tay budget for it, uh, na siya. At the new updates on our, uh, dental protection, uh, ruthless, ita-bid. Um, at, at, parang, pero, pero, balik, kagitan, add to, restabilizing, karan. And what are the, uh, for, uh, in satin sa, uh, livestock condition, si Mr. Nelson Resuela. Uh, na, at, uh, sa ato ang, after ani, mula daw, kung gumay na tama sa, uh, ano, uh, barangay, uh, libis, uh, uh, niyan, ato lang, uh, existing, uh, activities for this, um, year. So, right, okay, update sa tangan, may to gan'ta, to, uh, to, uh, to.
Log in now.
Uh, good morning. So, this is Honorable Bobby, special, specialized aware, aware, Honorable Vice Mayor, Dr. Swayle Caio, SB Stabs, uh, uh, Assistant M H O, President of Logan, na, Magreoficial, sa barangay Logan, and to, around this morning, good morning. Uh, uh, there, there was a claim for the abandonment of our dog pound. Uh, in fact, Honorable Ramos, Honorable Nuega, went in our, uh, dog pound area to inspect, is it really abandoned, but, uh, actually, it wasn't abandoned, uh. Uh, it was just the, the personnel assigned in the area was promoted to a permanent employee in person of Ray Obdamina. However, every time that we had, uh, a dog impounded in the area, he will be there for the, uh, week, to bring, uh, where the, the security of the dogs as well as the, the food, uh, that is necessary for the dogs, uh. Yes, and we are booked here, less than 100,000 dogs, of 100,000, uh, better as belongs. Uh, who are going to, dogs, uh, sa barangaysanito, mouse. That is not true that we abandoned, in fact, we have, uh, budget for, uh, it's only doctors were dilapidated because the best that we used was the, uh, the first galvanized iron, uh, that was coming from the health center before. So, we asked for a few galvanized iron to use in the fence. But, again, uh, since it was already used, uh, no problem, there's a problem on our fence. However, we have a budget of 100,000, 100,000 of our political fence, in our, uh, dog pound area, now. That would be, uh, the approval that it is, uh, abandoned, uh, I, I disagree with that, uh, because what will happen to it, implement, uh, straight-up vaccine in the streets? So, uh, because, there are so many problems in the society, uh. There is the, the accident, especially motorcycle, possible human bite, uh, there is the, as a scavenger, follow, scans in the streets, uh. This would be the problem, social problem, uh, that, uh, and street dogs can cause. Okay, so, last year, we were booked, thinking that 27,000 has of dogs. 1% of those, of those were, were redempt by the owner and vaccinated with anti-rabies. Uh, there are few people who redent the street dogs impounded in our hubs for the, uh, non-managed animal anymore. That's why at the beginning, based on our ordinance, um, ordinance, uh, that was, uh, first, heres of 2012. Now, in the section eight, in this ordinance, it is stipulated that impounding is one of our, our strategy in controlling rabies and mortality. Uh, that's why we are implementing this despite of the, the many activities that we have, but I know, should we, I, I, this is the, of address in this Bible. It is the barangay who will, uh, request, or will, uh, request for the the street dogs in our barangays, uh. So, we don't have authority to go to the area and the vicinity without the request of the barangay council. So that everybody knows that we are in that particular area on that particular day, about casting of the street dogs. In fact, there are people, uh, resist on this, in this, uh, particular, uh, activity, but we didn't mind this because we, we are like that particular dog, especially the, the one, uh, within two months. Or the distinction period of dog is only two months. And the long dogs can procure a certain dog within a year, what will happen to it? Uh, uh, every other municipality have the problem of street dogs. Uh, this is, and now, it is, uh, once, in a certain area, there's an inclusive population, the, the population of street dogs were fallen, uh, there's a problem, but
Uh, so the national uh job disa- ah functions.
Sayang mo?
Yes.
Okay. Basin ma- ma technical taban mo?
Because if if we notice, it is uh as of now, uh only one barangay uh requested for the especially don't pag rich uh in the coming up election, barangay election was coming. There were only few barangays requested for the capturing the stray dogs. Uh so perhaps once a month, so twice a month, so so for this uh the time that we don't have dog in the 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 dog pound, so we'll call him to to do for other functions.
Na pay mo official records ano sir?
Yes ma'am.
Kay, it's it's na sa concern nato, ginatanan nato sa local government. Kay, kung fifteen thousand ang mga dogs dari sa itil, inakaha after five years. So, ang ating, ang ang ating ginalam tabiha, tubong say himo sa local government na makadugang sa budget, sa mao, makadugal budget sa toang. Mga ito, 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 ito. So, ito, 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 ito. Masipang, sa budget, sir, iba, siya sa toang budget. Ito, 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 ito. Dugan ang ato ang mga mga iro, bakit short ang itong budget? Nagkadagat ang luso, nagkasiyong ang itong budget. So, mo na'y ato ang kan, kaya duri manay mahimo sa isa na ka department.
with the honorable Raul Light that conducted an oral inspection of the bar to the left with the and facilities at the Lantel La Braga de Guadalupe the town of the the facilities are still used there in the complete communities have not seen votes and changes changes but we saw our votes in Allen the citizens they're not let it tell them this that they can't acknowledge according to what I'm wrote on the the votes as well as about the the citizens do I hear them votes strongly they want yes they're others don't don't their they're where that they're part of the process of Braga officials on the other hand we also conducted and speak on the the to do last others have they tried to like the other services with them no I want say the 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 best attempt of the this that the area is very loud so the the county in last second sorry it's beside that that account system that including this both constructed project and that was constructed around uh that was project project but I understand that is
Mr. President President Sir sir there honourable chair honourable honourable sir sir honourable honourable
hello hello um good morning Mr. um I was um my name is Giga um visitors um barangay officials of barangay Logan headed by President Ayer um just to thank um the officials of but honourable Camila and the congratulations and that's all Mr. Chair
next next next
there anybody else
Anna
sir honourable chair
okay uh Mr. Flor may we proceed to the reading of the minutes of the previous session
honourable Chair I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session and for its approval
here is the motion to disperse the reading and for the approval Julie surrendered by General Alba and the honourable uh Noega discussion any amendments objections hearing that the motion is hereby approved uh Madam Secretary for the緣 business
for the business and the proposed ordinance until noon we have dropped ordinance number one to five so the honourable Valan El Capelunga and ordinance on funding the sanitation and smoking ban from April sixth stop now or if there
honourable Chair that is out and very important to
for the committee on rules and ordinances
other other communications we have boss key and will budget for the work and lies because various departments and the rights
honourable Chair I know that this matter the referred to committee on appropriations
your first matter to the meeting of appropriations
item B leaders from the municipal mayor and capital manager went to into between and due and the development group while planning the at the land shop I blame at the RS to
honourable Chair that is item very important to committee rules
for committee rules
item C submitted to the August bodies a cap to a local agricultural and civil organization plan at the municipal capital to the government for the demand and wasting figure on the resolution
honourable Chair but for committee agriculture
item D have an invitation from the PCL to the service of community and we are registered to the program of and eleven to twenty twenty at the land have an invitation from the government and the national council of the six thousand 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 eight from there sixteen to eighteen twenty four at seven seven some firms organizations and banks and I I have the organizations and banks and banks of the team that the council is the municipal bank of the
honourable Chair I know that this item very important to committee ordinance here at the
so
honourable Chair sir may we proceed to the committee report report sir there was committee report please honourable honourable Chair honourable Catherine Toral for the noise Catherine Toral
Mr. Chair Mr. Flor may we come to the department three hundred seventy nine should come here and the subject is the government and the government of the government is the best of the government is the the government is the government is the government is the government is the government has been the government is the government is the government is the government much for the committee and the committee to the government and the government is 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 the government so the government is the government is the government is
Mr. Flor he was surrendered by the members there any discussion objection voting the motion is
I move for the approval thank you the government is 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 the government uh the government is the government is
second the motion second he was surrendered by the honourable Chair and the honourable Chair discussion any amendments the motion is hereby approved
another resolution, Mr. Chair resolution of the government is the government is the government is the government the government is the government is the government is the government is the government is
here
second honourable
surrendered by the honourable Chair discuss any objection the motion is hereby approved
I think 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 uh I think this resolution is above a subject which was for the government is the government system and the government is 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 for I think 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 I think
it has been moved uh say Julie surrendered by the honourable Noega discussion any objection hearing the motion is hereby approved
so I think 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 I think
second motion second surrendered by the honourable Chair discussion any amendments uh objection the motion is hereby approved
another resolution, Mr. Chair authorizing the local to enter into a government and the bad as and some of the government is the government
second honourable Chair
Julie surrendered by the honourable Chair discussion any amendments objection the motion is hereby approved
committee report number two seven five two seven six two seven 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 one I think 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 I think